Good evening. Eileen, opening statement, please.
Township of Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, April 7th, 2025. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open at adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 2nd, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 2nd, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 2nd, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and the rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in a municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Could we have a roll call?
Mr. Barillo is excused tonight. Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Present.
Ms. Scottson is excused tonight. Mr. Cabaracus?
Here.
And Chairman Mertens?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Andy, could you swear in the professionals?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, starting with Mr. Conleth.
Charles Conleth.
Jennifer Beam.
Jerry Spiro.
Jordan Herta.
The professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Our first order of business tonight will be approval minutes from our regular meeting, December 16th, 2024. Eligible voters Cantor, Hughes, Roscoe, Scottsons, and Mertens. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
We also have minutes from January 13th, 2025. Eligible voters are Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, O'Donnell, Roscoe, Ryan, Scottson, Cabaracus, and Mertens. Can I have a roll call?
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cabaracus?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Okay, tonight we have correspondence, resolution case number BA 21-28, Freehold Welding and Corporate Resolution Memorializing Extension of Time. Eligible voters are Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, O'Donnell, Roscoe, Ryan, and Mertens. Another motion.
Make a motion to pass that.
Have a second?
Second to approve.
Mr. O'Donnell, roll call.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Resolution memorialized.
Okay. Eileen, I'm sorry, I did jump over to correspondence. Do we have any?
I have three things for correspondence. The first is the clerk had emailed every regular member, nonalternates, a financial disclosure statement, which are due by April 30th, 2025. She emailed you the instructions as well.
Okay.
The second thing for correspondence, I have case number BA 2417, 14 Ford Road LLC will be carried to May 12th, 2025, with no further notice, an extension of time through June 30th, 2025.
Okay.
And the third one is case number BA 2201, Haji Holdings. I have Mr. Alfieri here to make a statement.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We had a tech meeting with the board professionals, our engineers working on plan revisions, and we're seeking to have this application carried. I think June 9th was an open date, Eileen, right?
Yes.
So June 9th, it'll give him time to get the plans in and give your board professionals plenty of time to review them.
And I would just need an extension of time, I believe.
Fine. On the record, or you want a letter? Or I give you an extension right now through June 30th, and we'll send this letter to confirm as well.
Thank you.
So we just request that the announcement be made so we don't have to re-notice.
Okay, sure. Okay, case number BA 22-01, Haji Holdings LLC, use variance preliminary, final major site plan preliminary, and final major subdivision in bulk variance. This meeting will be rescheduled for June 9th, 2025, with an extension to time. And what was that again, on?
Through June 30th.
June 30th. And no notice is necessary.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. See you then.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody here for case number BA 24-17, 14 Ford LLC? This meeting will, the application will be rescheduled for May 12th, 2025. Expiration will be July 30th, 2025.
It's June 30th.
June 30th.
June 30th is my bag. Thank you. Okay. First application tonight will be case BA-21-17X, Gabrielli Howell Realty LLC, for an extension of time. Description, application, Gabrielli Howell Realty LLC, requesting a total of two one-year extensions of time for expiration date of the current approval through April 25th, 2026. The applicant received conditional use variance, bulk variance, design waivers, exceptions from the preliminary and final major site plan to construct a two-story, 38,750 square foot building for truck sales, leasing, and servicing with associated parking, loading, fueling, landscaping, signage, and stormwater improvement to block 144, lots 109 and 113 to point 1, 1207, 1209 US 9 North. Good evening.
Good evening. Adam Fiala from Sils Commissing Gross on behalf of Gabrielli Howell Realty LLC. That was a great introduction on what we're seeking today. There was one thing I just wanted to note, and it actually gets right into something I want to say in a little bit, is that the lot number is now 109.01 because the lots have been consolidated. We're here today seeking two one-year extensions for the vested rights to be extended to April 25th, 2026. As the board may recall, the approvals were granted on March 28th, 2022. It was memorialized and a resolution adopted on April 25th, 2022, so the two-year vested rights expired on April 25th, 2024, and that's why we're seeking two one-year extensions. We received the T and M review letter that was dated March 11th, 2025, and we'll provide the information that was requested there. Specifically, the reason why we're here today and to address the review letter is that the environmental remediation is still ongoing. We've been, or our client has been actively pursuing the approvals and the DEP permits that are required to move forward. It's just been taking some time, as environmental remediation sometimes does. We also have obtained some of the approvals that were in the resolution compliance letter that were attached to the extension review letter, and I'll just state that for the record, we have recorded the stormwater access easement, the stormwater management operations and maintenance manual deed restriction, and the deed of consolidation. We've also obtained the sewer authority permit. If any of those haven't been provided to the board professionals, we will do so. It was just an oversight. And right now, we're working to try to get that remediation done and get those DEP permits done. They do hold up some of the other items, like there's a different DEP permit that isn't directly related to the remediation, but DEP won't issue it until the remediation is done. So that's why we're here today. We also have our engineer here, just in case you guys have questions, but I don't know if you guys need any further testimony.
Well, let's wait. I want to hear from Charlie and Jennifer, and then we can decide whether we need to hear any further testimony. Charlie?
So I will say, I think Ms. Aljo's office, the applicant's engineer, had been correspondence with my office over the last several years regarding the remediation on the site. There are some revisions to the stormwater design that need to occur because of some of the remediation activity, so they are working through that. We were just asking for an update, and if the board remembers the site and drives by Route 9 and sees what it is today, I think the proposed improvements are going to be a significant upgrade to that property. It's just they're going through the process to get, you know, all the outside agency approvals and resolving. The remediation is a big part of that, so I have no issue with the extension of time.
Okay, Jennifer?
I have nothing to add. I don't have any exception to the extension that's been requested.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I don't think it's necessary for any testimony. I think we heard from our professionals. Board members, any questions?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just a question on the time it's going to take to clean up the site. Right now, it's an eyesore. I don't want it to sit there for two years needing an eyesore. Do you have any timeline on when that's going to get?
We are hoping that the remediation will be done by the end of this calendar year so we can commence construction before these extension of approvals would expire April 2026. I don't want to guarantee that that would happen, and there is always a chance we come back here for that third year, but we really do think that the end of this calendar year, it should be, the remediation should be completed.
Are there parts that can be done now and parts that would be, have to wait for the?
No, no.
All right. Thank you. Understood.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion by the board for extension of time.
I'll make a motion to grant an extension of time.
To have a second?
Second.
Second by Jose. Roll call.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cabaracus?
Yes.
And Chairman Mertens?
Yes.
Extension granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good night. Okay. Okay, the next case on the agenda tonight is case number BA 24-06, Turkish American Religious Foundation, conditional use variance and preliminary and final site plan with exemplary bulk variance relief. Application of Turkish American Religious Foundation Incorporated as the applicant and owner seeking approval for the conversion of an existing single-family dwelling to a place of worship with one caretaker residing on premise, known as block 59.01, lots 48, 49, and 41.03, for Windler Road. This application was partially heard on July 22nd, 2024, and August 12th, 2024. After being carried several times, it was rescheduled with notice. Expiration, April 30th, 2025. Eligible voters Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Roscoe, Ryan, and Scottson. And we have to see who is certified, because we only have five that can vote on it.
I have Mr. Cabaracus as certified so far.
Mr. Alfieri, right now, we do only have six. We can maybe move along and we'll do a, you know, kind of senses, and then we'll go from there, and then you can make that call.
Thank you.
Okay?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, again, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi, Alfieri and Jacobs, on behalf of the applicant. As the board chairman indicated, we did have a prior hearing. Since the last hearing, we've submitted revised plans dated October 7th. We've received a report from the board planner, February 19th, board engineer, February 4th. At the last hearing, we had representative of the house of worship. We've had Mr. DeFalco, and we had Mr. Higgins testify. The plan revisions that were made were the result of that hearing and the comments we received from the board professionals and the board members. Specifically, just to summarize, and Mr. DeFalco will get into it in a little more detail, is we relocated the driveway to Georgia Tavern Road, which was something that was a big issue to request. We removed lot 41.03 from the application. We agreed that there would not be an illuminated sign. We eliminated the sister prayer, sister's prayer room, and now the imam will live there as a parsonage, which will be ancillary to the house of worship use, and we reduced the coverage variance that was being sought. That's just generally what we did to try and get it as close as possible to conformity. Obviously, we need the D variance relief. We're going to have Mr. DeFalco and Mr. Higgins finish the testimony tonight and hopefully conclude.
Okay. And Mr. DeFalco, I believe you've already been sworn in?
Yes.
Okay. So?
So, Mr. DeFalco, would you summarize for the board the changes that were made to the plans to, I summarized them, but a little more detail to address the comments we received at the last meeting?
Yes. Good evening. So the access to the parking lot, which will contain 14 parking spaces, will be from Georgia Tavern Road, a two-way, 25-foot-wide paved driveway for the first 25 feet. After the 25 feet, there'll be a gravel driveway and parking area. The landscaping has been upgraded. We've submitted plans, and I believe we have positive feedback from Sherry.
Excuse me for a minute. Do we have those plans? Oh, here they are. Just, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, so we have an updated landscape plan. We also have a request, which carries over from the initial application. There is an existing road widening easement on both Georgia Tavern Road and on Windler Road. We'd like to maintain an easement for the future right-of-way width as opposed to a dedication to keep the lot area the same and to not change the front setback, which is already a variance situation. So we're requesting that an easement in lieu of dedication be approved by the board. Other than that, Mr. Alfieri expressed everything we've got. Parking is up to code. The floor plan was changed to show the imam's residence bedroom. Sister's room was removed from the plan, and the landscape was upgraded, and that's the change that we made as per the board's direction at the October or September meeting.
Have any variances, bulk variances been either eliminated and/or minimized as a result of the changes?
We have, I would say, yes, we pulled the parking area out of the 75-foot setback line, which had previously been a, either a variance or waiver. That's been pulled back away from the street in both directions. That's no longer an issue.
Okay.
And one of the, one of the conditions under the conditional use standards is connection to the public sewer, and I know in the reports it indicates that a sewer line has been run to the property.
Yes, when the Freewood Acres Sewer Project was built several years ago, a lateral was extended into this property, and a septic was removed and abandoned and approved by the board of health, the county board of health.
So we do, we are connected to the public sewer?
We are connected, physically connected, yes.
And then if the board or the board professionals wanted to get, want to get into more detail on any other aspects, we can do that, but generally speaking, you've had an opportunity to review the T and M report?
Yes, we reviewed the comments in Charlie's letter.
And the Avakin report, February 19th, and are there any technical comments contained within that report that you cannot address as a condition of approval?
No, there's not.
So can I just interject?
Yes, go ahead.
I mean, I have to apologize, Sal. I wasn't here at the first meeting, but I am not supportive in any way, shape, or form in a gravel parking lot. Like, I don't understand why you guys, if you want to make this a house of worship and people are going to come to church dressed up in nice clothes, women are not going to be thrilled with walking through a gravel parking lot with heels on. So I don't understand why, it's already impervious. I don't understand why we're not making that parking lot paved.
I guess the question first from Mr. DeFalco is that if paving the parking lot is done, what does it do to the stormwater management design?
Should have been factored in anyway, to be perfectly honest.
I'm not saying it should or shouldn't have, but we need to get the answer to that question.
Well, the design was based on the gravel and the runoff and infiltration under the gravel, gravel serving as storage under the parking lot.
I'm not supportive of that at all. Sorry.
We did think that we would have to put in some sort of stormwater management.
Correct. Correct.
Can, can? So if the board were to require paving, you're comfortable that you could provide adequate stormwater management to meet the regulation, current regulations?
We would, yeah, we'd have to do some clearing, but we could do that, yes.
What do you mean, you'd have to do some clearing? Why can't you put, put the gravel and the storage and all this good stuff under the parking lot?
We probably can work something out, but I would have to do some calculations to see that it would work.
Yeah, just to clarify, so it's not a major development, right? So there's, it's not a full-blown, so we'd just be looking for some stormwater management component to storm some reasonable-sized stormwater quality, something like that. It's not a full-blown major development, so.
All right, so that entirely up to the board, if that's?
I would recommend, if you're turning this into a house of worship where people are going to be coming on a regular basis, it's not a farm, this is a house of worship. The parking lot needs to be paved. Because the thing is, is if it's gravel, you can't, you can't guarantee that this many cars are going to be able to be parked there, because there's no demarcation, no delineation. So it needs to be paved and striped.
So, and we, I know at the prior hearing, we did raise that concern about gravel and the potential for creep, and they have reconfigured the parking lot so they don't have this grass area adjacent to it that they can just kind of expand into, but certainly, it's a lot more defined when it's pavement as opposed to gravel, what the limits of the parking area is, so I agree with Jen.
Okay.
I concur, but I want to hear from the board members. Does everybody feel the same way?
The question would be, how many of those spaces are for handicap parking?
One.
Well, you'd obviously need paved parking for a handicap spot.
Exactly.
That was shown as paved. That was paved.
Well, then why not do the rest?
Right, the balance should be paved as well.
I mean, we don't want to be throwing an extra expense, but I think what our planner is saying, and I agree with her, that it is a house of worship, and we're not talking about a humongous parking lot. So I think if it's done this way, it's, I think it's a better fit for this site, and I think we're all in agreement. That's what we'd like to see.
So we just have one follow-up question, clarification, Rich, go ahead.
So Charlie, you think waving curb would be adequate if we have bumper blocks in this?
Yeah, I mean, as long as the runoff is, and the parking area is graded in a manner that's collected into whatever stormwater management system you're provided, then I would say that's sufficient.
And that would be contingent on working with Charlie's office and satisfying him. Okay.
Otherwise, we have no other engineering personnel, and obviously.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Sherry, too, with the.
I had sent Rich an email in February just to update the landscaping, just to provide more diversity, because it's just really one shrub going all the way around.
Rich, you saw that email?
Do you agree to make those changes?
Change a shrub out.
Okay.
Okay.
The, just two things I want to touch on. So you said the sign on the structure is not going to be illuminated, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then you did move the site driveway to Georgia Tavern, I think, as a result of the board's discussion at the last hearing. I just asked that the plan show like a typical driveway site triangle in accordance with our ordinance requirements, because I think there is going to be some landscaping along the southwest, it's the west side of your driveway, left-hand side of your driveway as you're facing the street, that may need to be removed for site triangle purposes. And if they are to be removed, I just ask that the landscaping plan also be updated to include replacement trees to Sherry's satisfaction. You have an issue with that?
No, I think we have replacement trees already on the site, but the note about adequate sightlines is on the Plan Note 3, provide adequate sightlines from the driveway.
But if we need to remove trees to give you the adequate site triangle?
Show the site triangle, and then if there are trees that need to remove, just indicate they need to be removed.
We'll show the site triangle and hopefully minimize any tree disturbance.
Sherry, I have a question. At the entry, there's two trees, one on either side. What type of trees are they?
They're oak.
Okay, so not going to be an issue with visibility then? Okay.
Those are shown as on the outback.
What's that?
Those trees there are showing to be removed. There's two circles there.
Okay, because I can't see to be, yeah, because that was, my question was whether they should be there.
Yeah, they're X-ed out, so Charlie and I had discussed to see if that, if we could move the driveway a little bit, but based on the visibility and site triangles, it didn't seem like it would be safer to move the driveway, so those trees do have to come out.
Yeah, there's, there's two sets of site triangles. There's the one at the actual intersection of Windler and Georgia Tavern, right? So if we were to try to save those trees, the driveway would have to go closer to the intersection, which is probably a less safe alternative. So I'm okay with where it is, obviously.
No, I concur.
Is if you're looking at the plan here, on the lower left-hand corner of their driveway, there's just a general woods line that's shown. When they show the site triangle for the driveway itself, there's a potential that some trees may need to be removed there. That's what we're just asking. Show the site triangle for the driveway, if there's some trees that need to be removed, indicated on the plans, and just make sure Sherry's happy with the replacement requirement.
Yeah.
That's all we're asking for.
Everybody's good with that, because I, okay. Next.
All right, Mr. Higgins? And Mr. Higgins was also sworn and qualified at the last hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Higgins. Good to see you again.
So, Mr. Higgins, I know you provided planning testimony at the last hearing, and we've now since revised the plan, so we need you to supplement your testimony to deal with the current plan as proposed.
Yes, surely, well, the current plan actually eliminates two of the prior required D3 variances. That's the location of the driveway on the load of higher classification, and the location of the parking spaces were within the front yard setback. They've both been eliminated now, so that the only D3 variance is due to the existing location of the existing dwelling, which is going to be converted to the house of worship. And the other variance that's necessary is a bulk variance for basically the same thing, the location of the existing dwelling within the required buffer area in the front. And when I look at this, it's, the intensity of the use is very small. The ordinance is intended for much larger structures and for something that's much more intensive use on the site. And were the applicant ever to come back in the future for an expansion, I probably wouldn't be here testifying in this regard unless the building was completely replaced and removed to be a larger building.
Okay.
At this point, there's very little intensity of use. The activity's all inside the building. The parking area is screened fairly heavily by the landscaping that's proposed, and I do agree that I think it's better that it's an asphalt parking area. I think it'll actually be cheaper for the applicant in the long run, because a gravel parking lot requires a great deal of maintenance, particularly with the car still removal. So I think that's a better solution, and it's better to define, better to find the parking spaces. So when I look at this, I think the site can accommodate the use despite the need for the variances that are being requested, and I don't see any substantial detriment to your ordinance or to the surrounding properties.
Okay. Professionals, any questions?
No, I don't disagree with the. No, I don't disagree with the testimony.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Chairman, if I could just follow up on some of my notes from the meeting in August. I know there was talk about installing lighting on the house for the parking lot. And I think, Charlie, in your notes, you said that lighting had been agreed to? I'm just curious where that light's going to be and how it illuminates the parking lot from the building.
Yeah, so I think at the prior hearing, they would just, they indicated they would just address it as residential compliance. I don't know that they provided anything on the revised set of plans, but...
We'd have to bring the engineer back up because it would be Mr. Higgins.
Okay.
Rich?
While we're waiting for him, John, is there any issues over there since we've last?
None.
Okay, okay.
So did you propose any parking lot lighting yet?
Not pole-mounted lights. The applicant was thinking about floodlights on the corner of that one corner of the building.
Rich, speak up. You got to speak up.
Because they have minimal...
The applicant was thinking of a floodlight on the building facing away from the street, away from any neighbors, into the woods. So that may be a solution, up on the peak of the roof.
Will that provide sufficient illumination for anybody, or the congregants coming into the building?
No, 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 no.
Wait, wait, wait. We don't allow floodlights on the peak of any roof. So I don't know what he's talking about.
Jump in.
Rich, what exactly are you referring to?
Well, he, the applicant advised me that they don't have night activity. But in case they have a night activity, you would want some sort of a light, whether it's a security light or for the people that would come in the dark. His hours are not nighttime hours.
So a wall-mounted light would suffice, correct? I mean, not for nothing, it's April. These letters are from February. These are issues that you should have already resolved. So we're not, we don't allow floodlights on the peak of anything. So I don't know what you're referring to. If you want security lighting, you need to revise your plans to show lighting, like every other site plan applicant, have it reviewed by the professionals and advised to the board. I don't understand why you haven't done that. This is an issue that's been outstanding since August.
Well, the applicant wanted to, as he testified, to minimize the expense, this being basically a temporary situation, which I know the board doesn't think of it as temporary, but he wants to open the building to be able to get a congregation. Right now, there's maybe 20 people. He wants to get hundreds of people to sign up to build the big site on the other lot that we took...
So that's, I get that, that's his plan, but we have a site plan in front of us today.
Right.
So you have to address what's happening. I understand the cost concerns, but then don't do it until you're ready to do the big site, if you can't afford it. But putting a light on the peak of the roof is totally inappropriate. So you're going to need to revise your lighting plan to address the concern. If the board acts in the affirmative, it's going to have to be done now. We're not waiting on this big project down the line.
That's fine, so we will.
Because, I mean, there are times of the year where it's going to be getting dark around 4:30, and there is a safety concern, and we can't risk having anything happen until you do your bigger plan, which I hope you do do down the road.
Yeah. The reason that the applicant wasn't offering that was that, he testified that the services are from 12 to 2 on Friday, and then Sunday from like 10 a.m. to 1 p.m., but it may spill over into evening hours, we understand. But that's the reason behind not...
Okay, okay.
Yeah, sorry, did you have another question?
And there was, on my notes, I had, there was some questions about the septic being removed, and you're, there was a Board of Health to confirm that. Is that, where are we with that?
It's been done.
We have a letter. I don't know, I think town's got the letter.
And this connection's been made to the sanitary, to the public source.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Sure. Okay, what we're going to do now is I do want to go out, open to public, we'll do that. And then I do want to discuss with our professionals, we might even take a break for it.
I'll make a motion to open, Mr. Chair, public.
On favor?
Yes.
Eileen?
The board will now open to public if you'd like to come up and state your name and your address. Thank you.
Why shouldn't it close to public, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Second, on favor?
All right.
Okay, Jen, Charlie, I just want to get your take. Is this lighting issue something that we can put on the contingent of your...
I mean, if the testimony is that it's going to be downward-facing, complying with the ordinance, you know, not directed towards any adjacent residences, it's not just going to be a general floodlight that points out 90 degrees into neighboring properties, I think that we can work that out as a residential compliance item. The one thing that I also just wanted to touch on, I reckon, I think it came up at the last hearing, it was maybe a bigger concern when there was more grassed space on the site, but regarding like outdoor service activities, there's none of that proposed?
No outdoor service.
Okay. Then that's really all I have. I'm confident with all the items in my letter, Mr. DeFaco can address them as a condition of the approval, of any potential approval.
Okay, Jennifer, you?
I agree.
Okay.
Regarding that light, this is a one-story house, so like the gutter line that's on the back of the house is probably only at about 10 feet. That would be facing that parking lot. So where would be an ideal location for the light then?
Oh. Yeah, so yeah, it's, they're likely probably going to have to install some kind of pole-mounted lighting, you know?
I think the request at the last meeting was for the applicant to submit a lighting plan. We have not seen that. So I think it's, Charlie has indicated that he's comfortable reviewing it if the board were to act in the affirmative as a residential compliance item. However, he has to submit a lighting plan. We're not going to just take this conversation as it is what it is. The plan needs to be prepared and approved by Charlie.
Yeah, and it may be as simple as one light fixture facing from the house of worship to the back of the site, because everything else is wooded around the back. You know, that's the rear and the side of that parking area, so.
Yeah, we'll submit a formal lighting plan as part of residential compliance, assuming it's approved residential compliance, because there's other plan revisions that need to be made at the same time.
Okay. So I guess it's time, any more questions from the board before we hear a summary from Mr. Alfieri?
I have a question.
Yes.
With 14 parking spaces, is there a capacity of what we're allowing as far as people visiting? I mean, if they start parking off the asphalt and piling up, I mean, how many, I know at some gas stations, they're only allowed X amount of cars, and that's a commercial use. If there's 25, 30 cars coming, is that a violation?
We testified, and it would be a condition of approval, again, if you approve it, that the current membership is six to 10 people, but the max it could be is 28, which would be ordinance compliant.
28 meaning 14 spaces, two per car?
Yeah, I think the ordinance may say three.
It's one per four seats.
Yes, so we're under what, we have more spaces than are required under the ordinance, but we, max 28 congregants would be allowed.
That's the maximum?
Max, yes.
Okay, I didn't know there was a maximum. Thank you.
Yeah, I was at the, yeah, I think it was the applicant that testified the amount of people. Okay, anything else, Mr. Alfieri, you want to summarize?
No, I think based upon the fact that we've made the significant changes that were requested at the board meeting at the last hearing, we, I think we've certainly addressed that we will comply with all the professional comments. The board seems to, the consensus is you want the driveway paved, if that's a consensus, we obviously would do that. We'll deal with the parking lot lighting. And I think from a planning point of view, and the fact that this is such a low, intense, minimal use for this site at the interim basis, we think we've met all the required proofs, and we request the board act favorably.
Okay. Anything more from the professionals?
You're, you're going to poll the board first, I think, right?
Yeah, I think we're going to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have any issues with this application at this time? Okay, Ms. Alfieri, where you go?
We'll do it. We'll go for it.
Okay. Roll the dice. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just bring up again, I know we've been over this a few times here, but, you know, paving the parking lot, you know, addressing whatever stormwater management, you know, what that Charlie's looking for, and straightening out the lighting. I would like to make a motion to approve this application.
Second by Mr. Orozco, could I have a roll call?
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Kavarakis.
Yes.
And Chairman Martins.
Based on the finding of facts, I also approve, yes.
Thank you.
Application is approved.
So anybody need a brief?
Yeah.
Does anybody need a brief?
Elliot, it's not going to hang out.
He's going to go to sleep.
That's why I take my...
Good night, Charlie.
Okay, next application is case number BA 24-02, Zarelli Enterprise LLC. Type is a use variance preliminary and final site plan. The application of Zarelli Enterprise LLC as applicant and owner seeking a use variance and preliminary and final major site plan, relieved to develop a 4,900 square foot addition to the rear of the existing one-story building. The existing building will be repurposed for use as a warehouse and office space as part of the proposed trade contractor business on premise known as Block 4, Lot 7, 288 Squonkum Road. This application was scheduled to be heard on February 10, 2025, when it was carried to April 7, 2025, with no further notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Detective Alfieri, again, on behalf of the applicant. You're right, we were scheduled for the February meeting. We did not come to that meeting because we wanted to meet with Monmouth County to determine what kind of improvements they wanted on the county road. We didn't want to come here and then have to make plan revisions, assuming the county had different ideas. And we did have that meeting. We do have three witnesses, and we have the applicant present as a fourth potential witness, if you need him. But we have, we have an engineer, we have a traffic engineer, and we have a planner. The site plan that was, essentially, it's a small, 5,000 square foot addition to the building, but it does require D3 relief because we do not meet all the conditional use standards for a trade contractor use. We have reports from your planner dated April 3, and your engineer dated April 4, and we have also the departmental review letters that we've received and will prepare to address. And Ryan McDermott is our engineer who is going to come up.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having us tonight.
You will need to be sworn in, and then we'll get your credentials.
Do you want to swear in all the professionals?
Yeah, why don't we do that? And I also would like to include the applicant, just in the event we do have questions. Thank you, Andy.
Andy, do you swear firm testimony of guilt will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help you God?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last for the record, starting with Mr. McDermott?
Ryan McDermott, M-C-D-E-R-M-O-T-T-U.
Christine Cofonne, C-O-F-O-N-E.
Ron Zarelli, Z-A-R-L-L-I.
Andrew Jaffola, J-A-F-O-L-L-A.
Everyone is sworn in.
Okay.
And Mr. McDermott, would you place your licensed engineering credentials on the record, please?
Certainly. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, license isn't being standing. I graduated from Rutgers University with a bachelor's of science and engineering. Principal dynamic engineering currently, been there about nine years, managed a variety of commercial, industrial, residential projects throughout the state. I've been before this board on numerous occasions, most recently was about a year and a half ago.
Okay, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you very much. If I could, I'd like to start with an aerial overview. I don't know if you have the map available. Perfect. And that's been marked as a...
This appears to be Sheet 2 of the site plan drawing, so I believe this is actually
already part of the exhibits.
Okay.
Excellent, okay.
We're just trying to figure out what it's referencing, like, do you have the list here?
So it looks like A3, which is part of the preliminary and final site drawing.
Perfect. Thank you, A3. This is our aerial map again. This is provided in the full set of civil drawings. For general orientation purposes, the north arrow points towards the top of the page. Squonkum, Yellowbrook Road, Lakewood, Farmingdale Road, AKA County Road 524, is immediately west of the site. The site is centrally located, is approximately that rectangle shape in the center there. Again, located at 288 Squonkum Road, also known as Block 48, Lot 7. It's approximately 1.9 acres in size, which is approximately 84,000 square feet. The lot is undersized based on the underlying SED-1, Special Economic Development Zone, bulk criteria, which requires a minimum lot size of 120,000 square feet. All adjacent properties, including those across the street, are located within the same SED-1 zone. The zone permits a variety of commercial and industrial uses, such as offices, medical centers, self-storage, sports complexes, microbreweries, and manufacturing facilities, to name a few. To the north of the site, there is a residential dwelling with a pole barn in the rear, wooded area located beyond that. To the east is a 200-foot-wide JC P&amp;L easement with high transmission electric lines running through it. Behind that is wooded area which contains the Mega Mahone Brook. To the south is a residential dwelling with Monmouth feed supply located beyond that. And then to the west is Squonkum Road with industrial uses, as well as a residential dwelling across the street to the northwest. Under existing conditions, the property is developed with a one-story building, which was formerly occupied as an auto repair facility, contains broken asphalt in the rear, or excuse me, in the front yard, while the majority of the rear consists of gravel, and the property is wooded around the perimeter to the northeast and south sides. There also is some board-on-board fencing and some chain-link fencing on either side of the building. With respect to existing access, there is no curbing along this stretch of Squonkum Road on either side of the roadway. The property has two loosely-defined driveways, each of which is wide enough to function as a full movement driveway, one on the north side, one on the south side. And these driveways lead directly to the parking area, which sits in front of the building. If we could, I'd like to flip to our site plan rendering, if we have that available. I sent over earlier today.
It's A23.
Excellent, thank you. So this is A23. This is a site plan rendering with today's date prepared by my firm. Similarly, for orientation purposes, the north arrow points towards the top of the page. This is essentially the site plan sheet from our full set of civil drawings with some color applied and some landscaping applied here. We here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan and use variance approval for a trade contractor business which is conditionally permitted in the SED-1 zone. The proposed development involves maintaining a portion of the existing building up front and constructing a 5,320 square foot expansion for a new total gross floor area of 7,441 square feet. So that light shade of tan you see up along the roadway is the existing portion of the building to remain. Again, about half of that existing building is going to be demolished, and we're proposing a new expansion off the back, which is that more orangish color. The new total gross floor area consists of about 670 square feet of office space and about 6,700 square feet of warehouse space. The building will have two overhead doors on the south side and six overhead doors... on the south side and six overhead doors on the north side, with office space up front and open warehouse space in the rear of the building. There were a couple of potential waivers cited in the planning review letter which were associated with the architectural standards. The applicant has agreed to modify those elevations to comply should the board decide to act favorably on the application. The applicant is here tonight and can answer any of the operational questions you might have. However, just to briefly describe the operations, Zarelli Site Services is a portable restroom and dumpster company serving builders, homeowners, event coordinators, and project managers in Monmouth and Ocean Counties. They anticipate for this site approximately seven employees total, with hours of operation being 4 a.m. to 6 p.m. The non-office employees will leave their personal vehicle on-site and utilize a company truck for the off-site operations throughout the day. You may be familiar, there is, the existing headquarters is across the street down a road a little bit at 255. So, a critical component of the business operations includes the need for outdoor storage. The applicant is proposing about 40,000 square feet of outdoor storage area behind the building. However, the setbacks associated with this outdoor storage component do not comply with the conditional use criteria, and therefore, we are seeking D3 use variance approval. I'll touch upon each one of the conditional use criteria now. First, the minimum lot size shall be 40,000 square feet. We do comply. We're a little more than double that. The maximum permitted building size is 20,000 square feet. We do comply. We're just about 7,400 square feet. Outdoor storage of materials shall be set back a minimum of 10 feet from the side or rear property lines, or the distance of the required buffer, whichever is greater. The outdoor storage space is set back 15 feet from the northerly property line and 10 feet from the southerly property line. However, we do not meet the minimum buffer requirement of 50 feet. Because it was the greater or 10 feet with the buffer, the 50-foot provision would apply here. Next up, conditional use criteria.
Can we stop?
Sure.
So, why can't you comply with the buffer?
So, essentially, one, that would drop the amount of outdoor storage.
Yes, it would. It absolutely would.
But more important than that, I think, is the general location of the existing building and trying to maintain, refurbish that. It would make circulation around this site very difficult and essentially render the overhead loading doors on the north and the south side useless. We wouldn't be able to get trucks.
So, perhaps this site is not particularly suited to what you're trying to do. Like, there's no reason, other than the fact that it doesn't functionally work for what you're trying to do, that you can't comply with the buffer, which we don't grant relief from easily. And so, the fact that your operations don't work because we require a 50-foot buffer may then, and quite honestly, this is not the first time I've said this. I've said this a long time ago when this site came to us initially. You were there, weren't you? There's no reason, other than the fact that it doesn't work for you, that you're not complying with the buffer. We require everyone to comply with the buffer. We require people to take things out of the buffer. So, I mean, I know you have a planner here, and we can put a pin in this until then, but because it doesn't work for you is not really justification. That existing building can come down. You could reconfigure it. Like, there's literally no reason why you can't comply, other than it doesn't work for you.
Yeah, understood. I hear the importance of the buffer. I think we'd like the chance to put our case on the record.
Mm-huh.
Do you think we have a couple of points that we wanna discuss? Obviously, operationally, that would create some challenges. Understood that, you know, the board continues to hold a hard line on that.
And you guys have a site across the street, right? Two?
Correct. It's a little bit down the road. That's correct.
Just so you know, in that location, we had a similar conversation about the buffer, just so you're aware.
Yes.
Isn't it the same business that was operating out of that one?
It is. This would be an expansion.
But there was, but there was other businesses in there, too?
Correct, correct.
Okay. One question I have is there is a small residential, I believe it's part of Monmouth Feet. That's the owner of the house. I think he rents that out.
On the south side of the site, correct.
Yes. For that reason, I definitely concur with our planner as far as the buffer, just for that reason. So, I think something has to be worked out, because I do see a lot of room on this property, and I don't see why it can't fit. And get, you know, get that buffer in.
Yeah, I think.
I think that would be a big.
Particularly on the north and south sides. So, we've got a building, and you could, correct, here's a screenshot. So, the existing building is on the right side of the page here. This is a Google Street View. And then the dwelling was on the left side. Here's the existing building. What we're trying to do is maintain front portion that you see there of the existing building, obviously dress it up, refurbish it, but then extend that building longitudinally so it goes backwards. Along that extension, we would have overhead doors on plant, you know, the view we're looking at here would be the left side and then the right side.
And that, that building also is not compliant.
Right.
So, we're keeping a building that's 21.7 feet off the road, which requires variance relieved, where 60 feet is required, and that footprint is causing difficulty with compliance of our buffer. Guys?
Mrs. Beb, I have a question. That building they're showing right there, is that the old Grattan building?
I think so. I think it is.
Isn't that under remediation?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that.
Do you know if that's under remediation?
So, we did submit a Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental site assessment. The Phase 2 assessment, the final conclusion was that there was no further action recommended for this site.
Is all those containers there yours? And on that property? It don't show here now, but I passed the property within the last couple of weeks, and I saw.
Yeah, there are a million storage containers just all over the property recklessly. So, if there's nobody using the building, whose trailers, whose containers are they?
I thought the property was contaminated myself, because that property's been vacant for years and years.
Yeah. Based on what we've seen, the Phase 1 environmental assessment, and then the subsequent Phase 2, which was the additional study, did not recommend any further action on this property.
Has that study been submitted to Mrs. Beb?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we had it. So, Mr. Chair, could we take a five-minute break?
Yes, sure. Eileen will take a five-minute break.
The board will now take a five-minute break and reconvene at 8:02 p.m. Thank you. The meeting will now reconvene.
Mr. Chair, we've, we're gonna ask to be carried. We're gonna attempt to enhance the buffering as much as we think is possible. We understand that the position is that, at least Jennifer's position is, I want 50 feet. I don't know if we can make that work, but we're gonna do our best to get something that we think is something the board should, hopefully positively be considered. And we'll meet with them, board professionals also, before we resubmit. But we'd like to carry to, what is, can we do that same June meeting, Eileen?
Yes, I just have one application scheduled and then your previous application, so if you'd like that, that's fine.
That was what, I forgot the date already.
June 9, 2025.
Is that okay, Brian? Oh, Brian, see the next one. Sorry, Brian.
Yeah, excuse me, Sal. Eileen, is there, that application on the 9th, is that a carryover or a new one?
Um, they're both new ones.
Yeah, mine's, mine's the Our House Tavern. That's new.
Okay. So, you can decide what you wanna do first, I guess, since you're, so it's your call on that.
I love all my applicants the same, but we'll sort that out. But at least it gives us enough time to meet with the professionals and try and work out some compromises.
Mr. Cantor, you had a?
No, I just wanted to say, you said something about it was Jen's opinion. I think it's the board's opinion, not just Jen's.
I appreciate that.
I just will need an extension of time as well, Sal.
I'll send the letter through June 30, and we'd ask that it be carried to June 9 without the need for further notice.
Thank you.
June 9. Okay, we're gonna be carrying this application to June 9, 2025, and the further notice is June 30? What was the further?
Extension.
Extension, okay.
But no notice on the new date.
No notice, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, at this time, do we have any further business? Seeing none. Our next meeting is, I believe, on the 21st. Is that correct?
No, April 28.
Oh, that's right.
So, you get a break.
We actually get a three-way week vacation.
Yes.
Wow. Yeah. Okay, so we're meeting April 28, so I wanna wish everybody a happy Easter, a happy Passover, and we'll see you then, three weeks. Meeting adjourned.